Order, please silence your electronic devices so we can conduct business and stand for the invocation by Councilperson Beal.
Okay.
Council President, please follow our Lord's Prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. I keep you calm, I will be done. Give us this standing, brother. Give us our presence, and we forgive those who trespass. We worship the Lord with all our heart and soul.
On the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Public comments?
I have Richard Umloff.
Okay, all speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. You may limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. And the first bell means you have thirty seconds left. Please wrap it up because I'm going to have to stop you on the second bell.
My name is Richard Umloff. I live at 465 Ellicott Street. I'm here, again, I was here this past Tuesday for the Ward Six meeting, but I am looking for the council's very early approval at building a skate park for the city of Batavia. It would be a public park, hopefully located within a public park, so it's free and available to anyone to use. I am working with a gentleman from the Tony Hawk Foundation and the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Foundation, who does built-to-play grants, dollar-for-dollar matching of $250,000, with a $50,000 ecological study grant as well. I'm aware that we previously had a skate park within the city of Batavia. There were some obvious downfalls, location, structure layout, and then obviously lighting, that sort of thing. So I'd like something going forward to be more public, more accessible, more visible, hopefully to prevent some of the other issues that arose from that location. This is a project that is very, very close to me because I was one of the kids that benefited from our previous park. I, gave me something to do. I've never been much for team sports, so it, it kept me, you know, free and clear of, of some of the things that I may have otherwise gotten into. I'd like to quote my sixth ward representative, Rosemary. Her quote was, "Everyone should get involved in their community, and there's always time to make a community better for everyone." So I'd like to head up this project myself and make the community better for everyone and offer a space to the youth where currently there is none. At the moment, they're driving to Buffalo or Rochester to go skateboard or BMX or rollerblade. So I would like to hopefully head the, the project up and, and give this space to those who need it. Really, that's, I'm just here looking for, for some sort of approval from the, the council. That's it. This is a, this is a big project, and I know that there's going to be a lot of fundraising or, or money talk, and obviously the taxes. So that's going to be a big thing going forward, but at the moment, I have a small group of people. And since the Ward Six meeting, I've had quite a few other residents of the city reach out to me and express their interest in, and it, it gives me that much more hope and determination that we can make this come about. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel response?
I think skate parks is a good idea for the kids, but if you were to do something like that, what's the liability? Are you responsible? Are you responsible?
Well, I'm thinking this is way too early. I mean, I think we need more information. I mean, to just say, "I have a concept," and invite us to support it, yeah. The concept is good, but I, I'd like to see what, you know, they're going to have to design, where would they like it? I mean, there's a lot of other parts to this.
And we can look into maybe, and they can look into grants that are available and so forth, so we wouldn't be...
Pardon?
Yeah. Council President, members of the council, I came from a community prior to Batavia where we had a skate park, and there is a liability involved, and it ties into working with the insurance companies and, and dealing with your deductibles and those types of things that are associated with it. It, it, it ties, obviously, to what your functions are, what the size of it is, what kind of a crowd you draw, what kind of controls you have over it, what kind of lighting. There are a number of different factors that go into it, as Kathy was saying, so I would say that if the city was serious about considering something, we'd not, we'd want to take a look at all of those factors, to be able to give you a good answer of what the liability actually would be. But yes, there is a liability tied to it.
I would imagine it's got to be similar to any liability that we have in the city parks now. Is that close, George? Where you, like, we have a water park.
There may be some different layers to that. I think, to add to what the city manager said, you'd probably want to meet with NIMR and have NIMR as part of their audit and analysis that they go through for the city facilities, take a look at the perspective of what a skate park would add, make sure there'd be insurability for that type of use, and if there were additional deductibles associated with it, you knew what that would be. Unfortunately, there's potential liability for anything that a municipality or, or private owner of property does, so to say no wouldn't be the case. But exactly how that would fit in with what the city's portfolio of properties or parks already is, we'd want to make sure that there's, there's ample insurance coverage for that. We want to make sure if there was an issue as to, you know, as the manager noted, size, oversight, responsibility, things like that, that that was factored in and that information be considered by council, so you could analyze the risk and cost associated with potentially taking that on.
Right.
So basically, we're, we're at such an early stage at this point. There, there needs to be a lot more information before, I mean, the concept sounds like a good idea, but I think I personally need a lot more information to find out. What is this whole thing going to entail? Do we even have space? Do we have any of these concerns with liability? I mean, there's a lot of other things. So, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to continue on your path and, and keep with that information.
I really would like to see his committee continue on and come back to us in months to come. I mean, it couldn't possibly be a worse time than this time with our taxes this year. So I really would like this committee to continue on and then come back to us in months and then give us another briefing on everything. That would be nice.
Well, you also, even dedicate city man-hours to this at a time when we have all these other projects going on. That's going to be, those, that time is valuable as well. So the best thing to do is keep providing and get as detailed as we can get so we can get to the point of actually knowing more, because a lot of questions have to be answered at this. Um, do you hear, is there, I hear some kind of radio.
Some type of talking, yeah.
Something's coming through a speaker's, I don't know, but somebody's phone or something. If you could check that. Anyone else have any other comments? Okay. Communications.
Darn it.
The next city council conference meeting will be held Monday, February 24th at 7:00 PM. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. And we have a proclamation for retired deputy chief, or assistant police chief, Todd Crossick. Come on, come on. Is it assistant chief or deputy chief?
Assistant.
Assistant chief.
Let me try. Congratulations, Police Department. Whereas Todd Crossick has retired as assistant chief of police in the City Department on January 3rd, 3rd of 2020, after 21 years of service. Todd has career with the City of David Police on September 20th, 1998, as a police officer who is previously employed by the City of Rochester Police. Todd also served in the United States Army, having been deployed since then. He promoted to detective in 2008, detective sergeant in 2016, and assistant chief of police in 2017. Todd also served as temporary sergeant during his time in the department, and throughout his career has served in many roles, including as hostage negotiator, member of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, board member of the Children's Advocacy Center, and field training officer. And Todd has served as positive role model and mentor to many in the community, continues to be involved in programs that have a positive impact on the youth in the city of Batavia. Therefore, in true sphere of appreciation for over 21 years of dedicated service for the city of Batavia, the city council of the city of Batavia that's hereby make this proclamation to sincerely thank Todd Crossick for his dedicated service for our community and wish him well in his retirement.
It has been a pleasure and honor to be able to serve this community. I love this community over on the Prospect Avenue, so to come through the school district here, to live here, to do my entire career here, and to give back to this community has been just awesome. It's always my dream to be able to, to do this in my community, that's why I left Rochester to come back here to Batavia. And just thank everyone for the well wishes that I've received over the last week or so. The Alphory's been fantastic, just kind of surprising at some levels, but thank you, thank you guys for this. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Very much, thank you. Okay, the tax cap override.
As discussed in the budget meetings, there is, a need has arisen to bring up a proposal for a tax cap override in order to be able to address the revenue and expense issues for the city of Batavia. I did want to note for the record that when we came before the council at the last budget meeting, we suggested that basically a 50-50 split on, on the amount of money. The amount of money is fairly substantial. $700,000 is nothing to sneeze at by any means. And the, the city staff and the department heads, bureau chiefs, division heads have been very good at helping us reach the 50% level on cuts. And just to let you know the process of that, I met with them, I talked with them, told them where we needed to go, and they went back and took a look at what they, at their departments, at their line items and their budgets, and said, "This is what we can do next year," or "This, this is what we can do another way." And so, so our hats off to our department heads and bureau chiefs as a team for working hard on that. And they did, did put in a lot of hard work on that side of it. On the other side of it, there are two pieces that are tied to this. One piece, of course, is the VLT. We've heard about the Video Lottery Terminal revenues. The other piece that is tied to this is tied to the workers' compensation unallocated cash that was in, sitting in the workers' compensation fund. It wasn't all of it, but it was a chunk of it. We took a look at that, and when the VLT hit, I went, and I did go back, strong recommendations from staff said, "We've got to be careful. You could, we ought to be careful with that." We went back and looked fifteen-plus years at the city's past budgets. And in looking at that, it was a very strong determination on my department, on my part, that, that I needed to listen to them, that I needed to listen to the data that, that was laid out in front of us and come to you and say, "I'm sorry. I am, I am by heart a conservative, but as far as the business of the city is concerned, we are in a position where we cannot use those funds. Those funds need to be there." And, and we know that there are going to be, and claims that pop up occasionally, and sometimes those claims are sizable. They can be one, two, five, $600,000 in a single shot. Sometimes they can come unexpected. And, and it's, it's very important for us that we don't leave ourselves hanging liability-wise. We went and took a look, actually, at what it would look like if we said, "We're just simply going to take care of this one with unallocated cash." Almost $1.2 million out of unallocated cash, that would have been a significant drain on the city's cash reserves. As you know, under, under the state law, there isn't a specific amount, but, but the State Comptroller's Office encourages us to keep, try to hit a 10% level. And when we're dealing with our rate, bond ratings and those other types of things, it's very, very important for us to be able to maintain reserves, maintain a level debt payment schedule, and to be able to maintain the ability to show that we are financially sound, that if we get hit with a major event, we're not going to be, we don't have to roll up the carpet and go home, so to speak, that we're going to be able to withstand that and move on. And I wanted us to, and I'm very concerned that we need to be able to do that. So with that, that is why the recommendation that is in front of you. The original amount that was proposed would have left a .97% increase in tax rate. The new, the new one puts you at about 6.4, I'm sorry, 7.48 approximately percent.
So just, just to be clear, so everyone understands what's driving this. A couple weeks after we started our budget process, the governor proposed in his budget to remove VLT money from local communities like ourselves that was collecting it. In our particular case, that was approximately half a million dollars of lost revenue with very little notice. So we had to go back and come back with a second proposal of a balanced approach to override the tax cap as well as cut some expenses that we really needed, but we can try to maybe put off for a year. So this gives us a year to look at this and come up with a, a plan for next, next budget. At this point, we only had a very few, a, a week or two to make, make a decision, and we figured we have a time schedule as well. So we came up with this idea. Tonight's item on the agenda is just to schedule the public hearing. We're not officially voting to do-
Correct.
-a tax cap increase at this point-
No.
-or exceed the tax cap. We are just scheduling the public hearing so that it's in place, that in the event some things change, then the governor changes his mind, we have a chance to option back off to our other plan. The other increases were the discovery laws change, which we had to pay an additional fee to the county-
Correct.
-our prosecution of, of costs to the county, through the DA's office, and we were going to plan to hire our own employees in the police department to try to offset some of this paperwork that's going to have to be shuffled through. So in the meantime, we're going to use existing employees and to see how this whole bail reform slash discovery pans out. That buys us a little time. We're not going to put on an additional school resource officer as part of the schedule. We were going to put a second one on. That's going to be held back, and some other cuts across the whole departments. That all equals out to $350,000. And then the other $350,000 needed due to this governor's removal of our money is going to come from a tax increase. So it's going to push, potentially, the scenario would be $9.60 per hundred thou, or per 1,000 of taxable assessed value. So it's going to go up several cents than it is right now. But at this point, we have no chance, we have no choice, other than take money out of reserves, like you said, which is not a wise idea, because then we can get caught short if there was a major incident or an expenses that we need, we'd be cut short. And we still have to think about this next year anyway, because if this money's not coming back, we're going to have to figure out ways to offset that, that half a million dollars.
Right.
So is that basically-
That, that basically encapsulates it. What I passed around to members of city council was a property tax rate variation. We know that there was, there's a couple of asterisks in there, obviously. One of them was you had the year, I think it was around 2013, 14, when, when the, when there was, there was a service that was taken off there for the, tax rates were brought down because that service was no longer provided. So, so when you look at that, you see the steep decline in, in the, in the rate, and then you see it's been varying anywhere in between, it's been varying, a drop below nine for a couple of years. One of them was because of an extremely favorable improvement in our taxable assessed value, and another one was following immediately on the heels of that. So we've been in between the, after that, we've been in between the nine and a half-ish and, and 8.9 range for the last, oh, it looks like five, six, almost seven years. Right now, for the, for the city, I think that on, from a business standpoint, obviously this is, this is going to help us, certainly from, we took a look at two or three different options. We thought, you know, we can't, we can't unload this all on, on taxpayers. At the same time, we thought, well, we can't take away, we can't start taking away services that taxpayers are looking for, so how do we strike a balance? And this is, this was the balance that we came up with, and it's, and it's our recommendation to you.
Well, and, and also, just so people know about the VLT money, we did resist for several years from using this-
Correct.
-to offset tax increases and whatnot, because we had the fear that this might happen. But eventually, at some point, the, the state makes us claim this as income-
Yes.
-and it counts towards the tax cap formulation anyway. So at some point, we started, three years ago, we, we started using it, and little at a time, and, and the, I believe the nursing home came back on the tax rolls. That dropped taxes dramatically, and we used it to offset the last two years, which were zero increases, and we were going to use it to offset this year as well, and then it, it got pulled from us without any warning. So at that point, that's why the dramatic increase. But hopefully, we'll have 12 months for next budget year, and we'll have a better plan in place, and maybe we could find some other places where we can maybe either increase revenues in some respect, or, you know, things that we can do without and cut some things that we don't absolutely need, and then offset it so it's not such a, you know, maybe keep it stable for next year. But this, this year, we're kind of stuck.
Yeah. Some of the nice things in the pipeline for the future is, I know that several of them have tax credits and those types of things, but in the coming years, when we see these DRI projects, when we said shovels in the ground, we are really very, very optimistic that we're going to see some shovels in the ground this year, and we'll see some improvements in values continue to move around the city. And I, I think, I think on that side, that we're starting to trend in a good direction. We are moving, I'm hopeful we'll hit our 100 million by 2022. If we don't, we, we will have made a very, very substantial dent in that direction, and we're going to just keep pushing it along, so. So on that side of it, I mean, that, that's good and that's positive, and we're seeing people wanting to hire more. We are seeing a little bit more on housing, not as much as we'd like to see. It's only a tiny trickle now, but we'd like to see that trickle become a little bit more of a small stream, so to speak. So we'll continue to work in those areas. We'll be working for revenue improvements on those areas that were cut. As an FYI to council and members of, of the audience, we are looking at potential grants or other funding sources to help these departments in the meantime, so we're going to be very assertive on that as well.
And just so, you know, everyone, I had some people contact me and say, "Well, you, you guys intentionally raised the assessments." That, we really have no control over that. That's all based off formulas, based on houses that have been sold, and that's a constant reevaluation process from the assessing company, or I think we used the town of Batavia, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we have a-
They're assessing and we jump on their-
Yeah, we, we have an assessor retained, and she, she acts, performs services for several of the communities in Genesee County, and we're one.
And so there's a system for that, that that goes through-
Yes.
-normal checks and balances where they take, take an area every year and they take a hard look at it, and it's a constant process. It's not just, "Hey, the city needs more money, so we're going to crank up your assessment." In reality, it's good news because your property values have seen an increase by a legitimate value for people paying the rate of houses in your area, so that's good news. You have more equity in your home. Unfortunately, it translates on the other end because you have to pay the tax on that home.
And a couple of others-
We're doing the best to try to keep it as balanced as possible and not shock people with large increases. This is, this just caught us off guard, so.
And a couple of things that have been happening, too. We haven't had very many, maybe six or seven or so, but we've, we're starting to have a few of these, these that were multifamily that became, had become zombie-type properties turning back into single families. We do have some of these properties that are coming in, are starting to be flipped. I mean, I don't know what, to what level of code, but certainly certain levels of improvements on the values of some of these that, some of the vacant properties that, that banks have been holding, they're starting to be bought up a little bit more now. And it, literally, this year, citywide, we're, we're looking at an improvement. More people are, are getting their building permits, they're improving their, which is a good thing. I mean, it's a challenge on the other side as well, but, but I, I, I do see some positive things in some of the neighborhoods here in the city of Batavia, and we're looking forward to some more, particularly in some of the areas and wards that haven't been seeing as much, that we're looking forward to the next two or three years seeing some real change, so.
Anyone else have any questions or concern? So are we in favor to move this scheduling of the public hearing to tonight's business meeting?
Public hearing, yes.
Motion to adjourn. Mr. Canali, seconded by Mr. Baikowski. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baikowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beal?
Yes.
Councilmember Canali?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis? Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Christian?
Yes.
Okay. I call to order the regular business meeting. You've been given your financials for November and December 2019. Get a chance to look them over. Anyone have any questions or concerns or reference to those? Okay, so we approve the financials for November and December. We're in consensus to do that, okay? You've also had the, a copy of the 2019 January minutes. Any questions or concerns in reference to those? So we are all in consensus to improve the, approve the January 2019 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, those are approved. Agenda items. Item 7, 2020, the local law to override the tax cap limit, schedule the public hearing. Mr. Canali? Number 8, 2020, the budget ordinance and scheduling of public hearing. Mr. McGinnis? 9, 2020, the change of the municipal code for new water rates. Mr. Canali? 10, 2020, resolution to close out capital projects. Mr. Beal? 11, 2020, the Genesee County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Ms. Christian? 12, 2020, amendment of the police department budget for stop DWI. 13, 2020, the resolution that authorized the council presidents for agreements for the Jackson Square property. Mr. Canali? 14, 2020, agreement with La Bella Associates. Ms. Christian? 15, 2020, various committees and boards. Mr. Baikowski? And 16, 2020, marriage officers. This can't be you, you're going to be one. Ms. Briggs?
Okay.
You're going to get into it now.
Here you go.
City attorneys report?
Nothing specific to report on tonight. I do have something for executive session at some point. I'll defer that to that point. It's positive news on a matter that's been out there for a little bit.
City managers report?
And I do want to offer an apology to Councilmember Canali. I promised him a, a little email, and so now you're going to get the verbal on the, on the dear committee. The dear committee has moved on. We've had two meetings. It has set for itself a three-month goal to come back to the council with a recommendation, which is quite assertive. We will be, I will be going to meet with, I think it's the Federation of Sportsmans later, later this week, together with one of the members of the committee, and we'll be talking to them about what we're doing and how this is going to run and how it's going to go, and invite them if they would like to attend, and, you know, and provide stakeholder input, that they're welcome to. And at the last meeting, they, what they did is ask them to step back, take a step back, instead of trying to look at specific landowners' properties, is to go back and look at, and they decided on eight different areas or zones in the city that look like they're areas of concern, and then take a look at which ones they want to start tackling first, and what opportunities they have to be able to do certain things in, in those areas, so that they can be putting the best, so, in other words, the recommendations would be toward the best bang for the buck, so to speak. In other words, the most positive activity. In this case, probably the dill instead of the buck, but, but I had to add that in there. I'm sorry. I just couldn't resist it. But it was, it's good. The group has gotten down to work. They've decided that they, they don't, you know, they're going to, they're putting their, any differences they, they may feel they have philosophically aside, and they're getting down to the work of taking a look at recommendations and where they want to go with this. And they're being very honest and open with, with each other, but at the same time, it seems that they are there with a mind to come out with a recommendation, so that, that's good. The other things we have going on, of course, is the Jackson Square Steering Committee got together, and there will be an RFP getting ready to go out, and we'll call together. We've already got a group of individuals from the steering committee that are willing to help us review the RFP, and then after it goes out, obviously, take a look at scoring and those types of things. The city center, thank you, Council President, for sitting in for Mr. Cross there at the city center for the mall. They're at the city center for the mall feasibility study. That one has kicked off, and we will be getting a next meeting together to planning for the first getting of public and stakeholders, and then we'll be stakeholder outreach to mall merchants, to surrounding businesses and organizations, the county, and different ones that are involved or may be impacted by any discussions. And in relationship to that, we're continuing to work with, with the Empire State Development on the million-dollar DRI grant for, for the city center area for improvements. There may be some opportunities to be able to get some, some of the improvements that have designs already done, to, to take a look at those, possibly gets some of that work front-loaded, and starting to see some progress in addition to the work. Also, it was reported to me by the Department of Public Works that Grove Construction has come out. I know that last week, they were here and doing some preliminary work around the skylights on the interior, checking the support structures and those around those areas, prepping themselves for work coming later on this spring. And there are, there are several other committees going on, but we're, we are pleased that, to announce that the ones that we have going, Crime Task Force is tomorrow morning. We're going to be sitting there and hopefully getting through the rest of the strategies, or as many, as close to finished with those, then we can start talking about ranking them, and what kind of resources are going to be involved with dealing with those. So we're pleased with the progress of those. We're going to continue with them, and we appreciate the, the work of, of you as members of the council, and members, and department heads, bureau chiefs, and members of the public, particularly members of the public who are working on these committees, and taking a serious, a serious approach to them and saying, "Let's get down to business and get things done." So that's my report.
Questions?
Matt just reminded me, yes, he has an answer. For, for a question that was related to a zoning issue, I think it's related to the garage, because the council, you did ask-
Right.
-to get some answers, and Matt's got a couple of answers.
Good evening, councilmembers. After the last council meeting, I did, you know, told you we would do some research with staff as far as the request for zoning change, specifically on Eloquent Street, as far as the use of a public garage. Staff reviewed that extensively. There is not a path forward in our current zoning to allow that to happen in that zoning area, or that, that specific zone, which is a I-1 industrial zone. Following up with that, we also reviewed the city's comprehensive plan, and the, under the comprehensive plan, that area is actually designated for a future zone change to a commercial zone, which is actually where a public garage is in allowed use. So, you know, it's a little bit of a complicated matter. There's a couple of different items there that are, are in concert as to how it should be moved forward, which also lends itself that it's, we feel very important for the Planning and Development Committee to review this and give its input to city councils to how this should proceed, and how to make this happen. In addition, we met with the owner of the property, Mr. Biscaro, had a real nice conversation with him, explained to him the zoning issues, how that could happen, what the procedure would be, as well as some additional detail we would need if he wanted to move that forward. Right now, he is reevaluating his property, how he might like to move it forward, what are the best options for him, as long as some of the code issues that go along with that. So he's really, you know, after the end of our discussion, he was really starting to rethink, and he'll say, "Okay, I still may want to do this, but it might be in a different fashion than what he had originally thought." So he's reevaluating that. I gave him some of the deadlines that we need to bring this back to city council, so he's doing some of his, his homework, if you will, at his property, and we'll get back to it. So, like I said, I believe we've done our due diligence. The path forward really does require a zoning ordinance change, and, you know, the law change, everything that goes with that, you know, which is just unfortunately a several-month process by design, but I think Mr. Biscaro understands that, and is trying to work his long-term business plan for that property in the confines of what we can do, and how to best, best accommodate him long-term with a zoning change, or how best that zoning change should, should take place, so.
Just, just to clarify one point that Matt touched on, is even if the property owner were to consider a full-scale rezoning petition to council, and council were to consider it and potentially make a zoning change, that use triggers a whole series of building code requirements. So it may be a situation where the property owner looks at this from a cost standpoint, from a feasibility standpoint, because of what that's going to entail to make it a commercial garage, that it may not be economically or practically feasible to do that, even if the zoning change were to be considered. So just, so council's aware of it.
We'll just take his decision.
Right.
In the meantime, we'll look at the planning to advise us-
Yeah, there's-
...the path forward in the event, because, I mean, it is in the comprehensive plan.
There's parallel tracks going on here, and Mr. Biscaro is doing exactly as the city attorney said. He's, he's reviewing what those costs are to meet, you know, his specific project outside of the zoning change, and then he can make his best business decision as to how best to proceed, or whether even to proceed with, with a zoning petition.
So even if we make the zoning change, he might decide it's not cost-effective for him to go in that direction.
So he, he's doing his evaluation on that before we come back to council with that recommendation.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I would rather hear from Eric to see what he wants to do before, you know, anything, and then-
Well, we're waiting, he's in the process of getting back to you, right?
Yeah, we showed him exactly what we need for a petition, the additional detail required, so, you know, and we told him, "Any questions, contact us, we would help him through it." But I think both sides have a firm understanding of what's required, and how, what we're trying to achieve here at the end.
Right. Okay, so the next, next thing is up to him then, at this point.
We're not considering any spot zoning, no, are we?
Absolutely not, absolutely not. This would either be an allowed use in an industrial zone, which he is currently in, which would apply to all industrial zones, or per the comprehensive plan, change, it's kind of like a little triangle shape between the, the railroad and Cedar Street there, to change that to a commercial zone, where it is already in allowed use with a special use permit.
Either way, though, it's a whole process of public hearing and everything else.
Absolutely, and again, to, you know, that comprehensive plan, if we want to try to make sure we use that as a guide, you know, that really needs to get fleshed out, I think, between the PDC and the county planning as well.
Anyone else? Committee reports?
Oh, no, I don't have committee unfinished business.
Um, just to jump on what Marty said about this steering committee, this has been pretty much in the works for a couple of years now, since the DRI was first awarded. There were some delays because of potential reallocation, but it's now finalized, so we now have that money set aside, and the steering committee met to decide on, they're going to do a feasibility study on how best to utilize that money, on top of the roof and all that is scheduled for repair. So one of the concerns I have is, a video popped up recently on all the, you know, sites that normally criticize and complain on a constant level, and it's a video of Severino Properties, where someone was actually inside that building and filmed that. So I would like to caution, you know, that's trespassing on any level, and I think our police should look into that at least, and find out how they got access to that building. That's not really a good thing for them to have walking around in there. It's dangerous in there. There's glass broken, and there's chemicals in there, who knows? It's a, it's a, it's a brown field, and it needs to be cleaned up, so I don't think people should be walking around in there. Secondly, I don't know why anyone would take a negative video and then proclaim it as some kind of aha moment. We know there's problems there. We know we want to fix the buckets, we know we want to fix the roof, but unfortunately, or fortunately, there is a slow process of spending that kind of money in tax dollars, and there were agreements that needed to be settled first, and so on. So all that took time, and, and now they, I saw them in there on their lifts, they were in there repairing the skylight, and they were doing a lot of work in there, and the people who have businesses there, who've invested their property in there, are happy to see that happening, and there was no complaints about the noise, and the hammering, and the sawing. They were very pleased to see work going on in there. So I know that film came out, but I mean, that film is pretty much dated, that's filmed a couple of years ago, and things have changed, and we're working on a process to move this thing forward, clean it up, and get it a lot better than it is now, so.
Yeah, no kidding.
You know, I saw that out there, and, and, you know, couldn't happen at a worse time, because it's old news. We're already moving forward to fixing that problem, so, just so you know, in case you see it.
Where was it?
I'm not going to give it any more credence than I already was, but it's on the usual Facebook sites, and somebody who goes around the country and films dilapidated buildings and proclaims how ugly and dilapidated they are, decided to do this on our two buildings, both of which are in the process of hopefully getting repaired this summer. So we're working on getting that totally cleaned up.
Are they going to, Severino going to board up the rest of the windows that are broken? It's terrible.
I don't know. I haven't gone by Severino's property. What-
I've done an outreach back to Steve Heid, who's working with him, and, and I'm going to be working on getting another visit with Mr. Severino in the very near future also, so. So we've, we've definitely had, he's had some communication back follow-up, and I'm going to have personal communication. I like, I like to sit down with people one-on-one, it works a lot better if I'm looking them in the eyeball, instead of just calling them on the phone, so that's-
And that's the same thing with this video, you know, somebody who doesn't even live here proclaims an eyesore that we know we have, and our own community is jumping right on that bandwagon and took the bait. I mean, there's a lot of positive things, like Marty said earlier-
And there were some, and there were some misinformation out there in the past, that, and the last time we met with him, and there were some, a lot of that was, some of that misinformation was cleared up, as a result of that kind of a thing. So that's a good approach to be, I think, to be taking to work, developers and future developers, and talking with. I did want to also give you an opportunity to let you know that I've been visiting with the different economic development agencies. We have at least two or three. We have the BID, the BDC, and the GCEDC, and we're going to be talking about our messaging in relationship to the positive things we are doing, like work, doing work inside the Mall of Concourse, two or three projects, getting ready to have shovels hit the ground, and we're going to start, you'll start seeing as the spring comes in and into summer.
You gave us this, we get a report on all these projects, so-
Yes.
I'm looking at this, and according to this, there's at least a minimum of three to four projects that are basically really close to being out to bid.
Yes, one of them is out to bid right now for contractor services.
So, so there is some positive things going on, and, and again, we're not perfect. We're doing the best we can with what little resources we have, and it's a slow process, but there has been progress, and it is moving forward, and it's not at a standstill, and it's not stagnant by any means. There is requirements, there is various studies and things that have to happen, it's New York State, it's that regulation we have to deal with, but they are, there are several projects that are pushing through, and they're getting it done, and I'm looking forward to seeing shovels in the ground this summer, at least on two to three projects, minimum, maybe even more. So there's a lot of good things going on, and again, we know we have some problems in certain areas, we're working our best to get them cleaned up, so. Just, just needed to say that, because it just kind of upset me that local people were jumping on praising how we have a problem and we know it, and they're just jumping on it for no other reason than just to be angry and negative, and it's just the way it is, I guess. Unfinished business, you had something to talk about.
Yes, I want to thank you and Bob for attending the six ward meeting, the neighborhood meeting. We have seven leaders from seven different streets and six wards that want to get involved. We're very concerned about tenant houses, and the appearance of them, and some of the things that are going on with them. We talked about the Boy Scouts, and then possibly helping cleaning up some of the areas for the elderly and the handicapped, they live at these houses. We are going to meet again in March, so I will have more details in March, but other than that, it was really nice, and I thank you very much for attending.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Canelli, Resolution 7, 2020.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to introduce a local law to override the tax cap limit for the budget fiscal year commencing April 1st, 2020, and to schedule a public hearing.
Second, Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I'd just like to thank our Governor Cuomo and his cronies for doing this to us, for causing us this loss in this last-minute fiasco, and as we start the state with a $6 billion deficit this spring, he's busy in Puerto Rico giving away money, which is a type of a United States issue, so I hope he gives some slack from some of the citizens and thank him also. Thank you.
Anyone else? Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Christian?
Yes.
Councilmember Biakowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
Resolution 8, 2020, Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution introducing the 2020, 2021 budget ordinance and scheduling a public hearing.
Seconded by, Mr. Canelli. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Christian?
Yes.
Councilmember Biakowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
Resolution 9, 2020, Mr. Canelli?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution introducing a local law amendment in Section 1, 84-41, A, B, C, and O of Batavia Municipal Code to establish new water rates, meter fees, and a capital inclusion fee, and providing for public notice and hearing.
Seconded by, Mr. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Christian?
No.
Councilmember Biakowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Veely?
No.
So there's a reason you didn't want to schedule a public hearing? You realize that was the scheduling of the public hearing? It's not a vote.
I'm sorry, I have to rescind that, and, and, you know, have the public hearing.
And we're just scheduling the public hearing, we're not voting on anything.
No, I didn't realize.
Doesn't matter, it's-
It's 5-2, move forward anyway.
It passed, so just be careful.
Yeah.
Okay, what we're doing here, all right.
New water rates in Roseburg.
No.
Yeah, that's right.
I understand, it's a difficult thing, but we're just scheduling the public hearing. We're doing the house-
Yeah, that's fine.
Resolution 10, 2020, Mr. Veely?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to close out the capital projects.
Seconded by, Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Christian?
Yes.
Councilmember Biakowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes. Resolution 11, 2020, Ms. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I move a resolution authorizing adoption of 2019 Genesee County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Seconded, Mr. Veely. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Christian?
Yes.
Councilmember Biakowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
Councilmember Veely, I'm sorry, Canelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 12, 2020, Mr. Biakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to amend the 2019, 2020 Police Department Budget to reflect the receipt of a Stop DWI Grant Amendment in the amount of $25,481, to address the crimes of driving while intoxicated and/or driving while ability impaired by drugs.
Seconded by, Mr. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Biakowski? Councilmember Biakowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Veal?
Yes.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Christian?
Yes.
Resolution thirteen twenty twenty, Mr. Canelli.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to discontinue the public use and to authorize the Council President to sign agreements for the sale of a 12-foot-by-50-foot parcel property of Buddy Jackson Square.
Seconded by Ms. Christian. Any questions or concerns?
Mr. President, I did want, in the spirit of full disclosure, I did receive an email from a resident, Mr. Jeff Giller, that wanted to make sure that it was passed on to you, that he had some concerns about giving up square footage inside the Jackson Square property in relationship to dealing with other activities. I haven't received anything other than that from him, or no real explanation of why, but I wanted to make sure in full disclosure that we did get one citizen comment back by email, so...
As I recall, we looked at this, and we did not see any way that would affect anything. It's a public property that's kinda off in a corner that's not really...
Our Public Works Department's taken a look at this, and it's not... It's an area where people would be normally seated right behind Eli Fish, doing what they're wanting to do at Eli Fish, so it really isn't gonna impact anything as far as the activity of the square, or any of the improvements under the DRI that are proposed for the square.
Did the person that sent the letter, is he an adjoining property owner?
No, he is a business owner downtown, but he's not... I'm not aware if he's an adjoining property owner or not.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Christian?
Yes.
Councilmember Biakowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Veal?
Yes.
Resolution fourteen twenty twenty, Ms. Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move a resolution to authorize the city council president to execute an agreement with Labella Associates.
Seconded, Mr. Veal. Would you just cover with the... It doesn't really give much information there. I mean, it does to us on the other part. Would you just explain why this is being done?
Right, and I think Rachel might be able to help me out with this a little bit, too, but I think this is tied to one of the recent grants that we received, and they had gone out for... To take a look, and they scored the RFP, and the RFP scoring brought Labella Associates to the top of the list on this particular project that is tied to...
$300,000.
The $300,000 Main Street Grant. This is the one that the Batavia Development Corporation is assisting the city with. However, the grant had... Did have to come through the city for paperwork purposes, and our assistant city manager is working with Andrew at the BDC on this particular project. So, this is to help guide and shepherd that project along, so... And basically, what this project does is, we have a number of businesses, enterprises in the downtown area here on Eloquent Street, on the Main Street area, that had applied for, had not quite hit the level where they were gonna be awarded in that round of dealing with that $600,000 grant. And this... So, we, as the city, had said, and the BDC said, "Yes, they would help us," and got another grant. We asked for half my, and the state gave us $300,000. So, what this will do basically is allow us to have some additional businesses with storefront improvements and improvements in their infrastructure, their structures.
So, this is basically, we're not exceeding $22,500 out of that money? Because the money for this, is this coming from city, or is this coming from the $300,000? That's the question.
That's my understanding, is it's coming from the $300,000.
Right. So, it's not to exceed, so they'll be contacted if needed, and it won't exceed that amount?
Yeah, they can't exceed... Yeah, they're not... They can't exceed their limitation.
Just wanted to make sure that we, you know, just make sure we understand where this was all coming from and everything, because... All right. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Christian?
Yes.
Councilmember Biakowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Veal? Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, resolution fifteen twenty twenty, Mr. Biakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to appoint members to various city committees and boards.
Seconded, Mr. Veal. Any questions or concerns? Did you wanna...
I just wanna say, please let me make it clear, this person does live in the city of Batavia.
That's important, because we've...
She's been on the board before. She's been on it before, and she's...
Right.
Bob's got a question.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Mrs. Gerace, after serving two consecutive terms on the board, and waiting the, I think it's 90 days, and no one else applied to be on the board, and she's willing to serve another term. But also, a board like this, for so many people that complain about their assessments